Good evening, I'd like to call our work session to order. We're meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2013. The first item on our agenda is a presentation of the Central Maryland Regional Transit New Logo. Dr. Woods? Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, welcome. Good to see you again, members of the council. Thank you so much for sharing some time with us this evening to share our excitement and pride in the rebranding of the Central Maryland Regional Transportation Organization. As you may know, we've been around for awhile. We've been serving the Laurel community and the surrounding area for 25 years. We started back in 1989 with five routes, nine buses, and I believe we had about 175,000 passengers that first year. Currently, we manage two transit systems. We have Connect-a-Ride, which you may remember, the buses with the CTC in the circle, and the Howard Transit Green Buses. We have 17 fixed routes, two paratransit systems, two commuter routes, and we have over 70 vehicles operating now, and we serve 2 million passengers a year. The staff started out, as most small organizations do, as one. Today, we have a team of 31 exciting, professional, young adults running this organization and doing a wonderful job. We're still located and centrally headquartered here in your fair city of Laurel. We've expanded beyond that to serve three counties, Prince George's, Howard, and Anarundel. And we're proud this evening to invite you to see the new logo of our organization, how our, pardon my language, spiffy new buses look, and how some of our new bus stop signs are going to look as they appear around the city. So we'd like to ask you to join us outside just for a few minutes to help us cut the ribbon, see the new buses, look at the signs, and on behalf of Chair Janet Owens of the Board of Central Maryland Regional Transit, CEO Jim Perez, the rest of the Board of Directors, and our wonderful staff, we thank you for this opportunity. It's great to be in Laurel, it's wonderful to be serving the population through transit, and we thank you for your support all through this process.
Dr. Woods, if I could just ask you, before you sit down, if you would just introduce the members of the Board, the CMRT Board who are here, and anyone else that you'd like us to...
Oh, of course, of course. Past President Becky Mangus is with us, Director Stuart Title of AJ Properties is here. Do I have any other Board members I've missed? And we have, it would take awhile to introduce all the staff, I presume Mr. Perez might like to do that. We have Jim Perez, our CEO, Michael Weinberger, our Director of Communication and Public Affairs, Beverly Walenga, our Director of Finance and Administration. We have Mark Bullock, who is running our operations, and we have a wonderful cadre of people supporting them. It would take me too much time to go through all of them, and I'd probably miss somebody's name, so...
Well, thank you. I just wanted those of us who didn't know who some of the folks with CMRT to at least have a general sense of who's here.
Sure. And rather than sitting down, I think we'd like to join you, ask you to join us outside for just a few minutes if we want to catch a breath of windy, fresh air before we come back in.
Good, good, thank you.
All right, but I haven't touched so long, I hope you worked out with your touches.
Yeah. This week, yeah. We wait for it. Like if we ate so bad.
Every person.
of transit in Laurel by Mr. Jim Perez.
Thank you. I first want to thank Mayor Craig Moll, Kristi Mills, City Administrator, City Council Members, Paul Carle, CMT Board of Directors, and the Secretary, Dr. Michael Woods. I also want to thank our local partners, George Cardwell with Anarundel, Beth Kreider, MTA, Sean Egan, MDOT, and Victor Weisberg, Prince George's County. I would also like to thank the CMT staff for putting together a great plan since I've taken leadership of the organization. They've worked very hard to improve a lot of efficiencies. When coming onto CMRT, one of the most, I've noticed that over the last few months it's become the most efficient and cost-effective services in the state, always striving to find new ways to focus on our strengths. And what we've done is we've talked about it, we've worked on it, and we've come up with five pillars of success. Safety, that's probably why you see a red bus out there. Enhanced service, improve efficiencies and effectiveness, increased customer service, and satisfaction. One of the other things that I would like to mention about, and the last one, is we want to reduce reliance on local taxpayers' dollars. Again, CMRT service is safe, reliable, accessible, and comfortable. It meets the sustainability criteria of the region by decreasing roadway congestion and reducing greenhouse gas emission levels. Now, that all sounds really good for you guys and for us to present that. However, over the last fiscal year, we've increased ridership, we improved on-time performance by 5 percent, we reduced operational costs, and this is partly due to our manager of planning and operations of going in there and reevaluating deadhead miles, deadhead miles and hours, reduced customer complaints by 28 percent. Travel training program, we have trained more than 1,000 Human Service Agency professionals, exceeding our original goal by 20 percent. Our Transportation Resource Information Point, another program of Central Maryland Regional Transit, the number of visitors to our CMRT trip website increased by 193 percent. Those are efficiencies that we want to look for, those, that's how we want to become a more effective transportation service organization for the city of Laurel. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weinberger for the rest of the presentation. Thank you. Take it away, Mike.
Thanks, Jim. So, a lot of what we're talking about today, as you can see, some of them are cosmetic, some of them are looking at efficiencies and effectiveness of our service, but it goes deeper than that. What we really are doing is, a lot of people think of our service as just rubber on the road, buses that are going around, and that is a core portion of our business. However, CMRT is a partnership of transportation solutions and mobility solutions. So we have our buses on the road, we have our fixed route, we have paratransit to serve seniors and persons with disabilities, but we also provide private subscription bus service because we are a nonprofit, so we can do the types of public partnerships with the private sector to create service such as we have to Fort Meade. Additionally, we have a regional customer service call center, which is on staff seven days a week. We have a comprehensive planning services where we analyze our route structures and we look to make improvements by leveraging the technology that we use within our programs. We provide marketing and outreach, and as you can see, everything from the bus wrap to the sign, to the template of this presentation, to our new logo, that was designed in-house by our staff. As you know, we're located in Laurel, and we market to the community. We're trying to connect the region to create community, and that's the goal that we look to provide. We also have a resource website, as well as a travel training program to serve persons with disabilities and seniors. So as you know, the core of our service is in the city of Laurel, and that's where our main hub is currently at the Laurel Mall, as that site develops, and that's what we really are talking about in terms of looking at the new face of Laurel. We're just as excited as you guys are to look at what's happening over there at the Laurel Mall, to look at the town center and think about the future. And when you look at that area and you see walkability, livability, sustainability, transit has to be a part of that equation, and we're well aware of that because we've been a part of this history for nearly 25 years. When you look at where we're based in Laurel, it's not just serving purely the population in the city of Laurel to jobs in the city of Laurel, we're providing connections to get people to jobs in Laurel throughout the region. We serve the southern portion and connect to the Washington DC metropolitan area, so it's the Metro, the Mark trains, all the different Womata buses and the bus from Prince George's County are multimodal, they intersect with our system. They go far out west into western Anarundel County to service the Fort Meade region, and we connect all the way towards the north in Howard County, and we provide service further as far as Ellicott City in Elkridge, and we have a major set of hubs that we manage in Columbia, Maryland. So we manage 19 routes, and in terms of these connections, it's really nearly $3 million worth of service, and we get $1.8 million from the Maryland Department of Transportation on behalf of Prince George's County, as well as we receive a supportive $75,000 from the city of Laurel. And so we're really getting a lot of bang for our buck here, and we receive additional subsidies from MTA, MDOT, Howard County, and Anarundel County. In terms of our trip website, this website is something that really takes all these different jurisdictional services that are running along the Central Maryland region and makes sense of them. We provide real-time bus information, as you could see on the bus stop sign, we have all of our buses equipped with GPS, so when you text a number, you can find out in real time when your bus is coming. We provide schedules and fare information, and additionally, we provide trip planning services powered by Google. Another important thing to note is service alerts. During Hurricane Sandy, we were able to get information up there in an incident. It wasn't just on the trip website, we also leveraged social media, and this was really a way to get out to the public in real time in a way that, because we're a public-private partnership, we can do. Additionally, something that we're really proud of is the service that we provide through travel training. We've trained over 1,000 individuals who are staff at human service agencies, and the goal of this is a train-the-trainer model. Individuals are trained with the idea that they will then train their clients to have greater freedom, so they can use fixed route services and not just paratransit, and ultimately reduce the costs of paratransit, which is burdening, as it balloons, these costs for cities and for the state. So we're really looking to maintain that through giving people transit alternatives. As you noticed, we're going for a new look, and that's because all the work that we've been doing, especially since the arrival of Mr. Jim Perez from San Diego, coming over here and really saying, "How can we have a breath of fresh air? How can we have a new look that shows the direction that we've gone as a company?" So as you see these bus stop signs, the signs you're going to see within the area are going to be ones that are featured for the CMRT service area. We're renaming the Connect-a-Ride service CMRT, Central Maryland Regional Transit, and we've partnered with Metro, so we can have coverage where there are dual signs as a part of their Flag Stop Program, which we're participants in, through their MPO in DC. As you can see on this map over here, where you see the black dots, that's where we currently have bus stop signs, and the red dots are where we don't. So as you can see, we have a fair amount of coverage in West Anarundel County, although we could stand to have more, but in the city of Laurel and in Prince George's County, we really want to improve that. Within the next six months, we're going to have full coverage for the city of Laurel. That is our goal, and this is what we're looking to meet, to provide that information, to provide that wayfinding for the community that we serve. The buses, as you can see, dream became a reality. We designed this bus in-house, we had one bus branded "Today," and by the end of the month, you're going to see three buses running on the routes. This first bus is going to be running on the G Route that you've seen going by the municipal center, as well as we'll be having it on the J Route, which connects all the way towards Arundel Mills. So we're pretty excited about that. Additionally, over the course of the next month, we'll be unveiling new maps. These are diagrammatic maps, pretty similar to what you see with the Metro, so they're going to give you a sense of scale, where you can get a sense of place, and it makes those connections to the Metro, the Mark, all the different modes. And our schedules themselves are going to be designed in a linear flow, so individuals who are reading the maps are going to have a sense of, "I'm at point A, I want to get to point B, how do I get there?" But not only that, it's powered by trip. So people are going to have that opportunity to go online, get that information, answer their questions, use our seven-day-a-week call center, and all that is tied into all the products that we're providing. But there's even more opportunities as we look towards the future. CMRT, again, is partnering throughout the region. We're partnering with the city of Laurel, who's been a fantastic support for our organization, but additionally, we want to partner with all the regional entities to study and to plan for the future. We're going to be doing a comprehensive operational analysis of our transportation services, looking at where inactivity has existed in our routes for a long time, and looking at boarding information, on-time performance information, route information, to redesign these routes to meet active centers, active employment centers, active residential centers, and any points of interest, including, of course, the Laurel Town Center. And we'd like to continue that with looking towards studies for the Route 1 corridor as a whole, as Conterra comes in, as College Park develops, and thinking of this corridor as a real opportunity for transit. We're going to be expanding our call center, we're going to be looking at specialized commuter services for job centers, and we'll be launching trips statewide, so it won't just be for the Central Maryland region, it's actually going to grow out to all 23 counties through a veterans grant that was awarded to us through USDOT. And additionally, we want to look, and we've been working with the bus with Prince George's County, of thinking about ways that we can make connections to Beltsville and National Harbor that are affordable for the customer, that make sense for the taxpayer, and do the same types of things we're doing within the region. So, thank you guys so much.
Counsel, any questions, comments to Mr. Weinberger or Mr. Perez? I do have one or two, but Mayor, I'll...
Where are we at with the regional legislation that was in Annapolis? Anybody know?
Well, in terms of the bill that...
You need to, because you're being on TV.
The bill that was passed through the Senate has not become law yet. However, this bill is pretty exciting, because what it allows us to do in increasing the gas tax is provide the type of match needed to build the red line, which is the light rail in Baltimore, and the purple line, which is going to be tremendously critical to this region. When you look at College Park, and you look at Langley Park, and that entire east-west corridor between the furthest portion of the red line all the way to New Carrollton, this is going to provide the funding for that. But what's gotten lost in that legislation isn't just what's happening with the purple line, there's going to be additional subsidies and support for local bus service, because everyone's looking to improve their routes, to expand service in a way that's effective, so that money is going to go there. There are also going to be effects on fares for MTA, and some of that information is still going, you know, as the legislation's passed, is going to have to play out in policy, so we're going to have to see how that looks as it comes around the bend.
Mayor?
Go ahead, what else you got? You had something else? Oh, okay. I just want to make, I know Congresswoman Edwards was here, and you all did a nice job as she visited the city. I think it's important to make sure you're touching base with our senator and our delegates before this bill's passed, making sure they understand that this is a local bus system that goes back to former Mayor DePietro and former councilman and mayor Frank Casul, who were originals in starting this system, and I understand and I'll, let me just, again, I always like to say this, I'm very cautious of how much I get into detail with this, because I am an MTA employee, so I turn a lot of this over to Fred or whoever the council president is, but it's important for them to understand what this bill will do for Laurel, but making sure that there is a system in place, and that is important, that we try to keep that system in place and expand that system. So I would encourage you to try to make some calls before Monday to make sure they understand where we're all at.
I agree. We too had a visitor from Congresswoman Donna Edwards. We've been working with Senator Jim Robey, Delegate Guy Gazoni, Dr. Ajazi from the Department of Public Works with Prince George's, Senator Jim Rosenpep, he's not here now. We've been trying to work with as many folks as possible, let us know. From my experience in looking at CMRT or CTC, it's just that we were just a real small bus company doing a lot of good things, but never collectively like we're doing today. I got to say that I'm working with a lot of talented people. This is the longest period of time over the last three and a half years that we have had fewer terminations, resignations, due to my predecessors' leadership. We've been meeting with folks, I want to, really, I want to thank, where's Alex? Alex, why don't you stand up? I really want to thank her for the outreach that she's done with the city of Laurel and making this night successful, and working through the det... making this night successful, and working through the details of designing our graphics, her and her team and other folks on the team. I just want to thank you. But we are reaching out. And we do, we are just telling them what we are. You know, the successes of improved on-time performance is just unbelievable.
I guess my point is, before the session closes Monday night, it's imperative that we work the phones and they understand our position clearly down there, because things can get very confusing during this, during the last hours in Annapolis. So I want to make sure that the system itself is making some calls, the board members, I think counsel and mayor will make some phone calls. We want to see the bill move forward, but we also want them to understand that something's in place already, and we want to continue in that, that motion.
Yes.
I did also want to add just one additional item.
We were going to wait for Senator Rosenpep to join us, because we wanted to announce it with him here, and we've been on the phone with his legislative team. But we are going to be presenting Senator Rosenpep with the Frank Casula Award, which we've given and passed for his advocacy. Senator Rosenpep has worked quite closely with us, especially in, due to the fact that he has created a consortium of various voices along the Camden Line. And so we've continued to meet with him, but we will make sure before Monday that we make that happen. So thank you for that recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
And I just have one really quick question. The outreach effort that the mayor is stressed certainly is very good for the continued success and operation of the system. But I'm curious about with sort of your new branding, new buses, stop, bus stops, and all of the things that you've put so much work and effort into, outreach to your customers. What do you have planned in the near future to let your customers know that this is a new transit system? This is new. You've got a really nice bus out there. To let those folks who ride your buses routinely, who depend on your service, to know what you have coming?
That's a great question. And to be honest, I think that when you look at this, although it's, it is happening quickly in doing the unveiling of the logo, and these two buses that are going to come out are definitely going to draw attention, and we're excited about that. But in terms of what we're doing with the bus stop signs, with the buses themselves, and the new schedules, we're rolling that out. We have to do that education on the buses, so we have to notify them on the buses themselves. We have to provide that information through our call center. We have to provide that information through Trip. And we continue through our outreach efforts, through a variety of boards and committees that we serve on also, to get the message out. But it's not going to be that there's just bus signs populating everywhere, you know, we're going to, we've unveiled it, we're getting the message out today, and we're continuing that over. We've met with Anarondale County, we met with Prince George's County, we got their blessing on moving forward with this, because this affects their service area as well. So we have made sure to do that, but we will continue in that effort, because we are going to need to answer those questions.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I thank you all for being here. We look forward to continuing to work with and support CMRT. Mr. Manzi?
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize my partner, Alyssa Levand. Many of you know Alyssa, but I wanted to introduce her to the council.
Is this advertising you're doing?
No, this is a, it's not helping me, Your Honor. But it's very unusual to have my partner here, so I wanted to introduce her to the members of the council that don't know her. And she has been council for CMRT for quite some time.
I like that.
That's right. We're certainly doing that, so thank you.
Good. Thank you. And once again, thank you for being here. And, you know, if there's anything we can do to continue helping and supporting, don't hesitate. Agenda item two is ordinance number 1770, an ordinance to approve an MXT concept site plan, number 833, West Side School Board Property, Van Duzen Road. Mr. Brendel?
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Despite the length of ordinance 1770, I'm not going to go into it. These are, this is a topic that's most familiar to all the council members. This is just chapter two, as it were. These are just basically findings of fact that were introduced into the record for the previous application. And since it's a unified development, it's consistent for them to also be repeated in this ordinance. So what you see in front of you, hold on, it's coming up on the screen a minute.
You have five files here, follow them up, I'm getting the right one.
You do. Good shot. Yep.
Do you have another one, too? Is this going to be?
No, just enlarge it and we're good. Yep. Perfect. Thank you, sir. The area covered by ordinance 1770 is the area on the picture that is outlined in black. It's the northerly portion of this particular property. It is in the process of being acquired through the State Highway Administration by the strip matters. As you know, this property and the property east of it, the Anderson's Corner, were pretty much ravaged by state acquisition for highway improvements. So this one is still, this one's particularly critical to be unified, because it contains what will be West Side Boulevard, which is the only access point into the entire West Side parcel. This particular one is the other portion of the commercial, which is still capped at either 200,000 square feet of commercial and retail, and townhouses not to exceed 80. We're looking at a sketch plan right now for the high 50s. Just to let you know where we're at, the Planning Commission will have the final plan for the orangey tan area, which is the apartments at their main meeting, the final MXT plan. The area in purple is still in study, but in the stages of probably looking at, A, they're reaching an agreement for a mid-rise hotel. So all the original plans are still moving forward. I would also quickly add, though, that this property is still subject to the five-year rule. However, we were encouraged, and you'll see as part of the record when we transmit the staff report to you, hopefully tomorrow, they received a letter from Fern Perret, the director of the Park and Planning Commission, who said that the application was completely consistent with the county master plan for the area, which is an important tool, I think, in maybe waiving the five-year rule and moving forward. But as such, without any fanfare, we recommend the approval of the ordinance with the boilerplate requirements that they need to address as they move into the final MXT plan for this property later on this year. And obviously, until the county council waives, with the exception of West Side Boulevard, until they waive the five-year rule, no construction can start in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel. Counsel, I'll start with Councilwoman Crery. Comments, questions?
I have no problems with this.
Councilman Ricks?
Yes. Carl, when looking at the proposed retail space and the entrance off of Van Duzen to the right, is there enough space in there to put like a gas station or something like that?
Are you talking about this area here?
Yeah, the smaller.
No. That is a, in fact, they already presented exhibits to us. Because the adjoining single-home community is in Prince George's County, that would be heavily buffered around its entire length here and its entire length here. Both aberm and planted with pine materials. It'll be heavily buffered, yeah. And the Planning Commission would stop anything like that if they even tried to.
Well, again, I just wanted to...
But no, yeah, they have no vision for that whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Councilman Laddes?
Yeah, let me just, I have no problems. Let me just, just so everybody's clear, I'm sure it's clear to everybody. On the south side of this property, the side that's abutting Van Duzen Road, it shows the revised road, Van Duzen Road coming off of 201. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I assume that when this property is finally platted, there is a set aside for that.
Some of the salmon color will go away.
Well, hold on a minute. If I remember correctly, the way it works, it's set aside, and if it doesn't happen in so many years, then it reverts back to the property. Is that right, Bob?
That's correct.
And I assume that's what will happen here.
Yeah. That's also the case of the Planning Commission seat in the Avalon Bay development for Conti.
So even though it's showing Van Duzen Road now as the access point, it actually, may actually be a larger road that comes in the future as Conterra gets built out, as 201 gets extended. Correct?
Exactly, Councilman Laddes, because what they will do is, when there is a development plan for that, there'll be corresponding subdivision plots for the subdivision of the property filed, just as the MCR people, MCT people, excuse me, Mill Creek Trust, they have a subdivision plot to demarcate this area as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nicholas? Carl, just for me, could you just elaborate just a bit more on the process that's underway for waiving the five-year rule, just so that, as you stated, that no construction can take place until that occurs? So obviously...
You don't want the whole history, you just want it down and dirty.
No, 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 just down and dirty.
Sure.
Because I'm sure the applicant is doing everything that they can to...
They are.
Provide whatever they need to...
Right. I mean, the law provides, it was done for litigation in 1971, that when you annex property, it has nothing to do with Prince George's County, it's a statewide bill, that for a period of five years, if you rezoned a property to more than 50% of the density that it was in in the county at the time it was annexed, it requires the explicit approval of the county council. So it really is up to the councilmanic representative, in this case, Councilwoman Lehman, to forward such legislation. Obviously, this has been referred to them. But basically, the burden is the applicant's to go forward and petition for that, for the county to react.
Okay. Okay.
Now, having said that, and not to steal Bob's thunder, the law was changed to allow us to go ahead and zone the property. We simply cannot physically touch it until the five years is up if they decline. Previous to that, we couldn't even do this. Right, the applicant, right.
Okay.
So we can go to the point of, to that point, the no-grading or anything like that can take place.
Got it.
On this property. On this property, this is already duly zoned MXT, was brought in their way from the MXT in the county, so...
And I think that's the important piece, to make sure that it's not the entire project. It's just a portion.
Right. Because you have to look at this, basically, the what's in front of you this evening is Phase Two. And also, Bob and I discussed this extensively, we have to have a commitment from the state, which has not yet been finalized yet, the West Side Boulevard, where they have to provide access, but that we're assured that it'll follow this alignment, because again, this is the only access point to the remainder of the strip matter property.
Okay. Good.
Mr. President, may I do a follow-up, please?
Yes.
Then does it behoove us to lobby Councilwoman Lehman to initiate such legislation on our behalf?
I'm certain, well, it's not for me to say, but she's quite aware of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So counsel, are we ready to move forward on this on Monday night?
And there's a little brushing up, which we will do before we introduce on Monday evening, there's a couple...
I want to thank Carl, and as you know, we're starting to put stuff on the screen since Mr. President is...
Happy to see that.
We heard your message.
Happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item three is an update on the expansion of the Laurel Library.
I've restored off.
Okay, Mayor.
We're going to do a tag team here, Mr. President, and I think we're going to...
I'm going to start out, most, most of the council is fully aware that we've been working on the library for quite some time. It's a county project. It's a project that not only we have to deal with Prince George County, but have to deal with the Board of Trustees of the library system. One of the things that has been ongoing is Councilwoman Lehman has put together a group of citizens, which, and officials throughout the district. As most know, our council president serves on that, council member Donna Crery, Mike Lotzky, as well as Mrs. Mills, have been serving on that for quite some time, and others in the community. Part of the reason that we need to start having some open dialogue is this affects the Emancipation Park. One of the things that we've always said was that we wanted to enhance the park and make sure that the park is part of the system, the library system itself. And we didn't want to just give up the parkland. It means a lot to that community, it has a lot of history, and it is important. What you're looking at, that chart there, is currently what you see. And Mike, if you could just point out, just so maybe those at home, if they're looking at it, that the library itself, then Emancipation Park, and then there's a wooded section there. There's also a house, which I still call the Carey House, which has been purchased by Prince George's County. And then there's a house, another house that Mike's pointing to, that has been purchased by Prince George's County as well. Those will pretty much be raised, and then they will start the new library. There is funding in the CIP for this, and I know Mary's been working hard to make sure that funding continues as well. The library has just outgrown itself, the Stanley Memorial Library. It's most, it's one of the heavily used libraries, I think, didn't they say, in the county, Mike, my, or Fred? So it was important, we wanted to see the, see the library stay where it was at. Most know that there was a push to try to move it to the old police department, which my position has been that it should stay in the same area. The committee has made a recommendation that it stay one level, and there's some documents that the council president will go after. But what we need to do is, Bob, this will entail you, is first off, we have said that we would prefer to lease the property to them, a long-term lease, so that we maintain the property and the park, and we have control over that park. They will make the enhancements to the park, and it will kind of fold right into the library. If, Mike, why don't you show your other chart there? We did have a public hearing, I'm sorry, we had a community meeting at the library. We had about, I guess there were a dozen, dozen people there. And it's just important, as we move forward, because Bob's going to have to end up doing a resolution or an ordinance, I would think an ordinance, that I think the best way to go would maybe authorize me to negotiate and work with the county on this and put the terms within that on what we want to try to do. Because again, I want to have public hearings, allow the community to come up and have input on this as we move forward. What, is this the final one that we, okay. So you see the library has grown. It's one story. The park itself, which is what I really want to concentrate on here tonight, the parking lot itself grows because of the amount of people that the library will now attract, and there is community rooms in there as well. So that takes a little bit of back, a little bit of the Emancipation Park. Now, where we pick up pieces of the park is all the way over to 198 area. You go over to one, I mean, it's green space on the bottom part. And then it goes over all the way, we are moving, we would move the basketball court, we would move the playground equipment, which is why we're having some talks with them now regarding the fire that was there earlier. And then there is a walkway that you see through the property. There's green space. And then there is a small area, which would probably, what do they call in that? An amphitheater type that...
Orienting to where, which street is what?
Eighth Street. That's eighth. Look at your thing.
The diagram you have there, we'll show you.
Okay.
Yeah.
St. Mark's Church would be right here, down in this corner.
And so what I would, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is at least get some discussion regarding the park as we move forward. Mike, if you have some stuff, why don't you go, and then we'll turn it over to Fred.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, the library is now way over towards 198 encompassing the Carey property. The parking is over this way encompassing that one house that the county has bought. Yeah, the playground, which was in this vicinity, again, will be moved over here. The park at first was about three acres, and that was dedicated back in 1991. The park at first was about three acres, and that was dedicated back in 1991, for those of you that were here. Now, it's about two acres, with the property that the parking lot will take, and the library coming down further towards the Eighth Street will take. But, as the mayor said, the playground, they will be redeveloping a new playground for us here. We will probably supplement that with some of the insurance money that we've gotten from the disaster of the existing playground. And then, the basketball court will be moved over to this property, this part of the property there. We feel like there's still going to be enough open space. We feel like a lot of these trees, maybe not so many trees, a little bit less than that, will be installed. But, we think there's plenty of open space for the Emancipation Day celebration, and we think they're really going to enjoy, the Emancipation celebrations, really going to enjoy the amphitheater as part of the stage for their live performances. So, working with the Department of Central Services, we're moving forward on trying to get the playground done first. I think from our last meeting, Mr. Smalls, they're talking about an October start, I think, for building the library, you know, the bidding process and all that kind of thing. But, I'm told that they've, they're making a commitment to get the playground squared away way before that. I've got some renderings that I'm going to show my Parks and Rec CAC Committee next week, and then we'll move forward with, hopefully, with Central Services, get that thing started. Well, yeah, the park in this picture is three acres. So, right here is the old playground, going up that way, and around is three acres. So, what you see here, this outline of the park is basically two acres. So, we're going to lose about an acre with the development of the playground and the needed parking for that. Library and the needed parking for that, I should say.
But what we do pick up is the parking piece, which people are always looking for at the park instead of the street. The walkway itself, as you see, from the amphitheater around over to the courts, also takes you close to the new parking piece, parking that we put on McCullough Field, that walks over, and it's, you have to walk over 190, on Eighth Street, but it allows you to park there. And then, it's a lot, a lot more buffered. And there is some green space still where we have some small kids programs. And that, Mike, I thought it was my understanding, that they could still utilize some of that, the smaller kids.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. And I don't know a lot about what's going on inside the library, they just made some of those presentations, but they're going to have their children's area right here, right in this vicinity, I believe, so that there's easy access into the park, into the amphitheater, to do programs. And I think it also, a nice component of the whole project is with their Arts in the Parks, Arts in Public Spaces program. I think it's going to be about $117,000 that'll be donated, or part of, it could be inside art, it could be some art out here in the park, or out in the amphitheater area. So, I think that'll be a nice-
The county has a policy that one percent of the project growth, project has to be used for art. And part of this will all go hand-in-hand with what Mike just talked about, with the amphitheater and the other pieces, as well as some of the signage of the history of the park itself, of what we're doing, so, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Is this public record, again?
It is now that I just gave it to you.
Mr. President, I just have one question, so I understand. Mike, go back to the other one. So, the house they're taking down next to Jim Wardy's. What they're doing is, they're not utilizing the whole lot, they've left about half the lot there as a buffer. That would appear to be, that property, I don't know if I can make sure. They left about half the lot as a buffer, Jim Wardy's property. And this, and then the big thing right here, right there, the biggest gray, right there, that's actually a parking lot, right? So, the apartment, okay.
Apartment, right, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we seem to have a gentleman's club that meets in that corner at Eighth and Laurel Avenue.
Right.
I don't know that we've ever had any problems with those particular people. Does the chief know of any problem that exists there?
Just from what I've seen, there is some open alcohol in that nature.
There has been some open alcohol on a fairly regular basis at that location. Outside of that, right off the top of my head, I can't think of any other incidents that we've responded to.
And I just, I, I've never seen anything going on there. And I just see these older gentlemen that seem to congregate there on different days of the week, and they just seem like they enjoy each other's company and that sort of thing, go ahead.
I was just going to tell you, there's a whole lot more area for them all to sit in now. The community, there's actually-
I just want to be able to accommodate them, if in fact-
Well, if I could just add, having been part of the development meetings, Donna and I both, there'll be significant changes to Emancipation Park that'll make it a lot more family-oriented, so it's not to exclude anyone who's enjoyed the park in the past. They'll still have the opportunity to enjoy the park. Obviously, as Mr. Lotzky pointed out, some of the features that are presently in the park will be relocated to other sections of the park. But, there's been a lot of emphasis, significant emphasis stressed on maintaining Emancipation Park and the historic significance of the park. And Donna can talk a little bit about the actual building, but I just want to point out that where Mr. Lotzky pointed out, the amphitheater was a site of the old school there. Great effort went into making sure that that amphitheater is going to reflect the historic significance of that particular site, in its name and obviously in its purpose, because it'll be used as a focal point for entertainment, for reading activities, and a number of other things. We want, and in addition to that, again, to make sure that historic significance of that park is preserved and enhanced, there'll be a number of interpretive signs of all types, poles, display-type signs, that will also commemorate the historic significance of the park. So, it's going to be a place where the entire community, regardless of what part of the city you're from, will certainly be able to come to the park and get something from it. The Emancipation Day event is something that the architects, as well as the county, has never lost sight of, making sure that with the redevelopment of the park, that is not lost. So, St. Mark's Church will still be able to have the large gatherings on the park that it's always enjoyed, and even more so because we've gone back and looked at, again, the history of how Emancipation Day was celebrated many years ago. And that part of it is going to be celebrated in the park. I'll just add to what Mr. Lotzky said about the Arts in Public Spaces. At our last meeting, we had the presentation, or a discussion, I should say, on the arts, and following the meeting, and $117,000 that'll be available for art, both inside and outside of the library. And I volunteered to be a part of that committee for a couple of reasons. Wanted to make sure that there's not a committee of folks who are largely outside of the city who will make decisions on artwork that will be in the park, as well as in the library that's in our city. So, I wanted to make sure that the city's interest in the art is going to be represented. Donna, you want to add anything about the interior and the exterior of the building?
Sure, on the, if you would touch, Mike, where I'm talking about. No, the one that's up there now, on the side facing 198, that's going to be, one whole side is going to be almost all glass over there. So, it's going to use natural light, and there's going to be LED lighting throughout, which will be low lighting, so it'll be energy-efficient. On the amphitheater side, that is where the children's section is going to be. And it's very interactive, and they're looking at dinosaur paw prints in the carpet, and so they have to find their way through the library. There'll also be a cafe where you come into the library, there you go. So, people can go in there, they're also interested in, so people can receive texts on the Blackberry, so we can introduce and keep the young people, because if you can get people interested in the library at a young age, they'll stay for life with the library system, which is what they're encouraging. On the front side of the building, you've got a low berm, so that, that's almost all handicap-accessible. You're going to have your handicap spaces, but also so they can just come right up onto the berm and the entrance there. And that's where your bike racks will be, too. Also, where Mike just touched upon, there's going to be a service entrance, so that's going to keep that away from the patrons that are coming in through the main entrance. Attention's been paid to the carpet. Also, attention's been paid, not only to the trees that are going to buffer, but there's a permeable paver that you can actually put down in sections now, that's made locally. And the county went out and tested the soil, and so those pavers will work on this site. Additionally, to Emancipation Park, and to dovetail off what Fred was talking about, in that the library, too, what we've discussed is that one whole row of parking spaces, when they have Emancipation Day parade and celebration, will be able to be opened for booths, for people to sell things, or educate people, and so that additionally will add to the park's usage.
The mayor mentioned the change in the square footage. This library will be about 32,000 square feet. The current library is-
Fourteen to eighteen, but not usable, all of that.
Right, yeah, because of the basement, that's not usable space. The whole 32,000 square feet will be all usable space, whether it's ample staff space, as well as space that'll be available for folks who visit the library. So, the handouts that were passed out, if you look at just the second page, you'll see the red line that's around the project site is the property lines, and the yellow lines represent the setback. And you can see on the next, the next page, just how much of that area the proposed library, the new library, will take up, as well as what Emancipation Park will look like under this, under this new project. There's been a lot of thought and effort and consideration put into not only the building, but again, into preserving the significance of Emancipation Park and what Emancipation Park means to the city. So, I have no doubt, having been a part of this with Christie and Mike Lotzky and Donna, that we'll be very, very proud of what the end result is when this is finally completed. With that, are there any-
Mr. President.
Yes.
Let's talk about the proposed basketball court at Eighth and Laurel. What does the administration intend, the hours of operation, and whether that's going to be lighted or not? Has that been discussed?
Yes, Mr. Ricks, the plan is for it to be lighted, similar to what, and it'll be on pretty much the same schedule as the previous one. In other words, it'll be on timer, and we'll be able to turn the lights off at a certain time, that type of thing. But, yeah, the park, the parks will be, you know, our hours of operation will be the same in all our parks.
I'm just thinking about that particular house that sits there to the east of it.
Yes, well, as you can see, some of the woods will still be there, and some additional plantings. Yeah, it'll be something we'll have to keep an eye on.
Okay.
It'll be something we'll have to keep an eye on, yes.
It'll be well buffered, compared to what's there now, the big house and everybody across the street from the current basketball. I think if you take McCullough Field, that one, I mean, there's no buffer, no nothing there, so.
Okay, we got, it's trial and error.
Councilman Lewis, any comments?
This is a nice, this is, I guess, the latest landscape plan, much more preferable than what we had there.
Yeah.
There's too many trees on that one.
Yeah.
I'm a tree guy, but sometimes less is more. More importantly, it opens up the basketball court to the street, so that the Laurel's finest can ride by and take a look, and make sure there's no hanky panky going on. Very nicely done, thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Mike as well. I've sat in on a couple of the library meetings, and I'm very excited, I actually go to the library quite a bit, so I think the end result is going to be wonderful, and citizens are going to be very pleased.
Thank you. Mayor, any final words?
No, we'll have to work Mr. Manzi, there's a couple of different things. There's a paper street on here that we've already started working, a couple of abandonment's. But, the most important thing is to get the resolution out there so that we can have the public come and testify, one way or the other, and, but I think we've been pretty much upfront on this, and this information's been in the papers and elsewhere, so I'm hopeful it's a smooth sale. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Agenda item four is the draft ordinance to enact a new Chapter Three entitled Animal Control to the covenanted City of Laurel for the purpose of dealing with animal control throughout the city. We all should have a copy of the animal control ordinance. And Councilman Ricks, I'll give you the first opportunity for questions or comments.
Let me bring the council up to date. I do have some concerns, and I'll try and go through them as quickly as I possibly can. But, to bring you up to date on the proposed pit bull legislation that was before the legislature, as I understand it, as of today, it has passed both houses. But, from what I can understand, it's now being looked at to compare the two, or to compromise the two, if you will. And it appears that they watered down the pit bull end of it to just deal with a dog in general, so that it's not just a pit bull that they're picking on. I don't know that for a fact, but from what I've been able to garner, that's what it is right now. So, if you permit me, let me go to page four, the top of the page, where it says, "Cat shall mean domesticated felines." And I'm wondering why exotic was not included in there? Why is it not an exotic cat, say, a cat that comes from Egypt, for example? I mean, not that it's a big deal one way or another, but, you can laugh all you want, but people have these things. And say, well, you are saying a word by your acts. So, is there a reason that we didn't include that, or did?
Marty?
There's a reason to include it.
But this is modeled after, this is pretty much modeled after-
Basically, county language.
Yeah.
About the counties?
It's modeled after counties.
All right.
If I may, I understood it to mean domesticated, meaning within a house, and so therefore, it wouldn't matter if it was a foreign cat or an American cat.
Exotic, as I would sort of interpret that, could- Exotic, as I would sort of interpret that, could be a bobcat, could be a lynx, a lion.
That's what I'm thinking.
Those kinds, but as you described, one that's brought in from Persia or from Egypt or whatever the case, those I think would be considered domesticated feline by definition in this ordinance. And so therefore would be, would be defined as such. That's my interpretation.
Changed the definition to take care of that, so that's not an issue.
The reason we did it that way is the fact domesticated means it's somebody's pet. If it's somebody's pet, we don't care what it is, okay? But if it's not somebody's pet, and I think Fred is absolutely right, the reason we put exotic in there was to cover the people who have pumas and all kinds of what you would call exotic cats that should not be kept as pets.
Fred, if I could, I remember a couple of conversations I had with Dr. Morley before he passed away. I mean, there are bobcats in the state of Maryland. And that's considered an exotic, we don't see them because they're night animals. But they come down from the mountains when things get a little tough up there. But there are bobcats and those are considered exotic cats. But I assume that's going to be one of the ones that we might see around here, I don't think we've seen them.
Ain't no mountains around here, Mike.
We're good. When I see one, when I see that fox running down the street four o'clock in the morning, I'm going to call the mayor. Fox is mayor. Okay.
But, Bob, just look at the definition on that.
I will.
Let's see if we're covering that, Scott.
Then, looking further down on page four, where it then says, "Under the circumstances," shouldn't it be "any circumstances"?
Where is that?
Where?
It's looking, "Under cruelty..."
Tell them where you're at again, Eddie, I don't think I've got it.
Yeah.
What page?
Page four, cruelty, bottom of the paragraph, it says, "Available under the circumstance," shouldn't it be "any circumstance"?
I think it could go either way myself, but if you want to read any, we'll think of any.
Further down, "Under domesticated animals," bottom of the paragraph, it says, "Depended on humans for food." It says, "Or shelter," should it be "and shelter"?
I don't think necessarily.
Get done with what?
I don't think necessarily it should be "and." You know, we're kind of wordsmithing here, but it could be "and/or," if you prefer. Because, again, a domestic animal, a lot of folks may consider cats who spend a great deal of their time outside, they're certainly still domestic animals. They may not depend on human for shelter, but folks feed them, I have them in my neighborhood. They're not even feral cats, but they are house cats that spend a great deal of their time outside now.
Why should they?
Why should or shouldn't they?
Should they?
Should they?
Why should a cat spend time outside?
Well, that's the owner's choice.
Does he like it?
Uncontrolled?
In many cases, yes.
Trespassing on somebody else's property?
Well, they roam.
Who's, I know they roam, why should they? Why should they be permitted to roam? My dog's not allowed to roam, under the ordinance.
Uh huh.
So why is a cat allowed to roam? It'd be a pest.
Are we, are we talking now about the cats roaming or just the...
Well, I'm going to get to that, but since you brought it up, I picked up on it. So tell me why a cat's allowed to roam?
Dogs roam.
Dogs roam?
My dog's not allowed to roam.
It roams in your front yard.
It roams down the street.
It doesn't roam, it's not allowed to roam.
It roams in your front yard.
That's my property.
Correct, so a cat can roam in somebody's yard.
In somebody's yard that owns the cat?
Yeah.
What if it goes out of that yard?
Well, I could sit here and if any piece of legislation, you know, to death. If you got an amendment, amend it, if not, you know.
Well, I don't think cats should be allowed to roam.
Well, that's going to contradict the TNR.
And I know that.
And I'm not going to accept that, just so you're aware.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go take up all your time tonight, but I'll make amendments when it comes to the legislation. Because I don't believe, I don't, first of all, I don't believe in the trapditter program.
Okay.
All right? And I think that it goes against nature and I think that it shouldn't be allowed to happen. And I don't believe that cats should be allowed to roam and to invade my piece of property. I think they should have a collar on them like any other animal should, so it should be identified, that we know that the animal has had rabies shots and that sort of thing, so in case something happens to them. I'll make my motion to strike on Monday night.
Marty, you got any reaction to any of that?
No, sir. I mean, even though we borrowed a lot from Prince George County's Animal Control Ordinance, we did spend quite a bit of time on this and we feel that the document is, in all intents and purposes, what we need to manage animals in the city based on the demands that we understand the police department's being placed under. Now, as far as, you know, the cat's right to roam, I understand that eons ago, somebody in the state legislature basically said it's a cat's right to roam wherever they want to go and we basically took that at face value through this process. We understand that, you know, if a cat trespasses on somebody's property, if something happens to that cat while they're on private property, that's, you know, that's something that could be, for all intents and purposes, something out of our control.
I would never harm any animal, but I certainly would...
That's you, but you know, there's, there are people out there that, I mean, we had discussions about cats roaming and people being terrified of cats. This was something that we did ponder, but we decided, you know, based on what we understood and, you know, based on the program set that, you know, we're considering adopting or developing, we left it to match the county's ordinance. And last, but not least is, in order for us to enforce our animal code, we have to rely on Prince George County's resources. And to have a code that complies with their resources makes it a lot easier on us.
If not, you're on your own.
Right.
Good night, Walter.
If not, you're on your own, the city.
I just, I just don't agree with that, I don't care what the county does. I personally just believe that any pet owner should have their particular pet under control at all times and that they don't let that pet infringe on the rest of the people.
Councilman Ricks?
And that's what's happening.
I ask if you have other comments or modifications?
It will do no good.
Okay.
Waste your time.
Okay, well, if we're, any other, let me go around the table. Councilman Les? Councilwoman Nicholas?
Well, I think you would agree with me that, you know, we spent a lot of time on this and we had a lot of committed people from the community that were on our committee and it's a lot of thought and energy that went into this TNR, so.
Well, it's not TNR.
I'm sorry, not...
Not TNR, it's just the animal, the Animal Control Ordinance. TNR is not part of this legislation at all.
Well, this, this does give the...
A reference.
The city the right to.
Absolutely.
Reference appropriate, right.
Councilwoman Carrery?
I'm fine with this, I happen to disagree with Mr. Ricks, but it's not our individual opinions, it's the law that applies to everyone collectively. And I appreciate the amount of time and work that was put into it.
So, Councilor, we will be ready to present this at a third public hearing with possible action on Monday? Okay? We'll move on to Agenda Five is a draft resolution to make the Laurel crime line a city organization rather than a privately operated commission committee. Is that Mayor?
As most of you or all of you probably recall, we did develop our own tip line, if you will, crime tip line. We call it the crime line. And the reason we brought that into, into being briefly is, is, you know, in trying to work some of our cases, that warranted a reward or we felt that we could solve these cases with the assistance of a reward program. We had talked to Prince George County. Prince George County basically told us at that point in time that their tip line was for county crimes, so we started our own. And as we do in many circumstances, the CERT program, the Laurel Citizens Police Academy program, we basically started these, those organizations as private and discovered through the process of administering these programs that it was a lot easier to streamline, especially the finance processes and having the city manage the finances. And under that particular situation, we also felt that it was a lot easier to, for these organizations to take advantage of the city's tax status as opposed to going after their own tax exempt status. So what you have before you is a resolution that will bring the city's crime line in line with the other two organizations that I just mentioned for the, for the purposes of the tax status. We are ready, through our finance office, we maintain their finances. So we're just basically trying to clean that up.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Nicholas, any comments, questions? Okay, Councilwoman Carrary?
So they will maintain a nonprofit status?
Through the city, yes.
Okay.
That's it? Councilman Les? Thank you, Councilman Ricks?
Fine with it.
Thank you. So we will be ready to present this on Monday night? Great. Agenda item six is ordinance number 1759, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Good evening, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. This is our First Amendment to the FY13 budget. It increases the bottom line by $290,626. There are various sources of the addition of funds. So, starting on page two, where I've tried to lay out notes and little codes for the additions. The first one being a federal grant that was received to purchase, specifically to purchase tasers for the police department. So that, of course, has a corresponding addition to the police department budget and their equipment line item. Going down to miscellaneous refunds, oops, I'm sorry, contributions. We had received some contributions for the police department, special events, the National Night Out, as well as some of the organizations that rent field space and other parks and recreation facilities. While they may receive a waiver of the rental fees, they do provide a contribution, so we've accounted for that as well. Miscellaneous refunds and rebates, that is the addition solely $176,469 of insurance proceeds. The largest part of that, just over $131,000. We have the insurance money for Discovery Park in hand now. So there's a corresponding transfer to the CIP for those funds as well. There were also some vehicle claims as well as the hurricane Sandy storm damage expenses that we incurred. Additionally, in the police account receipts, this is where I need to show that we are appropriating from the use of seized currency. When those cases are settled, the funds that the city is allowed to retain can be used to purchase investigative equipment. And additionally, it's time to purchase one new canine dog. So that $27,945 includes that purchase as well. The other miscellaneous revenues includes the addition of some other police funds that were accumulated over time. They were used to purchase the cameras that are worn on the officers as well as provide some louvers in the cars for the canine officers and to paint one of the Humvees. So those are the sources of the new funding, of the additional funding of the $29626. Moving on to the lower part of page two and through page three, you'll see the disbursement of those funds. As Mr. Fleming was saying, the last agenda item, the addition of some of, or these few of our community groups being operated by the city. As you're aware, the last couple of years, we have been providing the administration of the funds for the Fourth of July Committee. So the addition of $36,000 to the community promotions budget is just to reflect the operations of paying their bills and showing the offsetting monies coming in. We, again, maintain separate bank accounts for them, it's not intermingled with the city's general fund. And this is just to show the activity, so this $36,000 will include the down, or the 50% required payment already for the fireworks display. And then the remainder of those dispersments that I discussed for the storm damage, the use of the police funds are all noted through the rest of the expenditure budgets.
Councilman Les, questions, comments? Great. Councilwoman Carrary? Councilwoman Nicholas?
I just have one question. On the third page, employee training and their employee tuition. Tell me about that, the training, is that like sending employees to classes and things?
That budget includes, yes, money that the departments have requested during the budget preparation period to send employees to seminars, more short-term training opportunities, except, with the exception of the, possibly the police academy, which is where that would be charged to.
Councilman Ricks?
I'm concerned about item number 10960, miscellaneous financing, use, financing uses of $204,060. What could that possibly be?
Well, we started with the $53,000 in the adopted FY13 budget. I'm adding $151,060, which includes $131,060 for the insurance proceeds for Discovery Park. We have received that money. So that needs, it's received in the general fund, it needs to be transferred to the CIP to pay for the renovations to the park. In addition to that are some other funds from vehicle issues and that would be put in the fleet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Mayor Mo?
No, when you're done, I got to serve Council's word.
Oh, okay. So, Council, we're ready to move on this amendment on the night? Great. That concludes our agenda.
This is a question. We received, or at least I received, a copy of the procurement procedures. If we have comments, do we just meet with the administration?
No, the email said send them to me by the 15th.
I'd rather sit down with you and just, you know, have a dialogue. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, is there anything else? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two announcements. I did want to make sure Council is aware, on April the 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Emancipation Park is the next community fun day. So April the 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and be similar to what we saw at Discovery Park. We encourage you to get the word out and also attend as well. Tomorrow, there is a joint press conference with the City of Laurel and with Prince George County Fire Department, and also the Fire Marshal, and the police department at 11:00 a.m. over at Partnership Activity Center, and that's regarding the expanded investigation that is occurring regarding the fires here in Laurel. And if you're going to be, if you're going to attend, we'd ask that you kind of get over to Partnership Hall by around 10:30, I think they're saying.
That's what the emails say.
Yeah, so just wanted to remind everybody about that. And I had something else, but I can't remember, so that was it, Mr. President. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting is adjourned.